The call to order the August 11th, 2014, Latrobe City Council Meeting. Please stand for the legislative agents.
I am President of the United States of America. I am with the Republic for the statements. One nation, one God, indivisible, liberating justice for all.
At this time, I ask for a moment of silence to ask for guidance, to give thanks, or to just quietly relax. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Buck.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Caldwell-Greitner?
Here.
Mr. Scopora?
Here.
Mr. Boldenary?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mayor Wolf?
Here.
All present.
May I have an approval of the minutes from the July 14th meeting, please?
I move that the minutes from the July 14th, 2014 meetings be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
Thank you. Mr. Scopora, may I have a second, please?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Boldenary. Any questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have approval of the fiscal department reports and paid bills for the month of July 2014?
Still moving.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No second.
Any questions or discussion?
Ms. Buck, again, are there anything outside of the budgets on these bills?
Nothing out of the ordinary. You might note on there that the general obligation warrant was paid for $226,843, and that's why the expenses are so high this past month. And towards the end of the year, we'll take money out of the parking revenue, some to pay towards that.
And that's typical over a year for that, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'd like to do a proclamation for our former mayor, Warren Marchionne. Can I have his family up front, please? Whereas Warren Marchionne lived life to its fullest and enjoyed the love and admiration of family and friends. And whereas Warren was always ready to share his time and talents with Latrobe, the community that he dearly loved. And whereas the service he rendered had both breadth and depth as mayor from 2002 through 2006, council member, member of the Latrobe Parking Authority, Home Rule Commission, judge of elections, and a 30-year tenure on the Latrobe Municipal Authority with 10 years as chairman. And whereas he was no stranger to charitable organizations, participating in the St. John Roman Catholic Church on the picnic and festival committees and church building committees. He was also the chairman of Latrobe Mark of Dimes Committee and Latrobe Fourth of July Celebration Committee, of which he was a founding member and was a member of the Knights of Columbus and the Fraternal Order of Eagles. And whereas his contributions to Latrobe were extensive and will long be remembered and appreciated. Now therefore, the mayor and the council of the city of Latrobe for themselves and on behalf of our entire community, recognize and honor Warren Marchionne for his many years of service to the city of Latrobe as public servant, community leader, and ambassador. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to the family of Warren Marchionne for his significant contributions to improve and elevate our city for his fellow citizens. As stated by former President Calvin Coolidge, "No person was ever honored for what he received. Honor has been the reward for what he gave." We honor Warren Marchionne for the many gifts he has given over his lifetime. This proclamation is issued under the great seal of the city of Latrobe. It's the 11th day of August, 2014. And on a personal note, you know how I felt about your father.
Yes.
He is greatly missed, and he's done a tremendous service to this community. We all, I love him and miss him very much, so thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
We're going to move on without the solicitor, and if we need him. Any of the citizens' requests, comments, we'll just have to take a pause at this time. Are there any citizens' requests, comments from the citizens related to items on the agenda, please, only at this time? If so, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three or five minutes. Thank you.
James Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. I just have one comment this evening. I would hope that the council would not approve the agreement letter with the accountants for the audit, the special audit that possibly going to conduct. Unless we suspect any wrongdoing, I think it's just a waste of $5,000 because we do have two signatures on all the checks and that there, so I would hope that the council would take that into account. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else have any comments related to the agenda? Committee reports, Finance Committee. Madeline, Mike?
I have nothing at this time.
I want to just touch on what Mr. Miller said there. We gave some particulars to de Blasio and de Blasio, and this is the first actual item that we saw that had a price on it for us. And in speaking with them, talking with them, they feel there's nothing that they can't pull out in the regular audit that wouldn't, nothing that they can't see in the audit that'll be coming up in January, end of this year, that would be caught, wouldn't be missed or would be caught by this special audit here. So I'm in agreement with what Mr. Miller said, and I think it wouldn't, the cost is more prohibitive than the findings might find. That's just my opinion.
Public Safety Committee, Julie, Jerry. Any comments?
Yeah, we had a lot of people for the Neighborhood Watch, signed up for the Neighborhood Watch at the National Night Out on Monday, last Monday. And I'd just like to thank everybody that helped and that was there, sitting with me in the rain, and we're always looking for more, so we have a meeting scheduled for September 15th, 6 o'clock here.
With pizza.
And we're having pizza, so.
We're bribing.
Bring friends, and hopefully we'll get this thing underway.
Anything to add? Sorry? He did a good job. Personnel Committee, Mike and Tricia?
Nothing on this end except that we will, as in a general item, be voting to hire a municipality manager today.
Public Works? Public Works, Madeline, Jerry. Anything?
If you look around town, you'll see we're starting to pave the streets. I'm trying to get ahold of somebody from Amtrak or Norfolk Southern to see about getting that fixed. I don't know if that's Public Works or not.
Get what fixed?
The platform up there. It's great. You know, that's the first thing people see when they come in on the train.
Am I nearly up with that?
Not yet. Anne's talking to a guy that's coming in, going to be coming in from Norfolk Southern, so that might be my contact. And I'm hoping to get together with the Public Works Committee to start working on the transfer station, business plan.
Okay, thank you. Madeline? Anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay. Community Development Committee, Fabian, Tricia, and Julie. Nothing at this time? Board and Authority Reports. Any Board and Authority Reports? As the representative on the Latrobe Park and Rec Commission Board, I'll just, you know, comment, I'm sure, well, not sure, but you may have all read the paper, that at the end of this year, Unity Township will no longer be participating in the joint chair between the school district, the city of Latrobe, Unity Township, and Youngstown. That's, the commission doesn't know the full impact of that yet. They will be shortly sending out a letter, they're not going to mail it to everybody's home simply because of the cost associated with it, but they're going to release it to the press, and they're going to include it in the brochures that they send out every fall, announcing the programs about, you know, fee structures changing and things like that. In most cases, our fee structure will not change, but, you know, it still remains to see how that whole thing is going to flush out. Julie, anything from the library?
No.
Department Reports. Mr. Bush?
Before Joe says something, can I?
Sure.
Can I say something? I wanted to extend many thanks to all the city employees. During the last few months in the absence of a city manager, the employees gave a new meaning to the word teamwork. Everybody knew what needed to be done and did it, and that includes all the department heads and all the city employees. Thanks for your professional attitude and great work ethic. The city employees are a wonderful group of people. Thanks team.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Mr. Bush?
As Mr. Boldenary mentioned, our paving started today. For, through Wednesday, weather permitting, we will be doing all the milling. Then things will set kind of idle till the following Monday. Next Monday, Derek Construction will be coming in and starting their paving. So there's going to be a couple of days in between the milling and the paving. July 19th, we decided to put on an E-Ways collection, and much to my surprise, it was a huge success. It was bigger than I think anybody thought. We had traffic backed up to Unity Street most of Saturday morning. Without some people unselfishly giving up their Saturdays, Ellen Keefe with P.A. Cleanways, Anne Powell, Jerry Boldenary come down to drop off a TV and ended up helping us for about three hours. Officer Sleisman was in uniform, but that didn't stop him. Bill Moore and John Wagel. We actually hand-loaded in about six hours 27,520 pounds. It was, it was huge. It was immense. I plan on having another one in the fall, but I think it will be a different location, Mayor, this time.
Yeah, I heard people tell me we had traffic backed up over the bridge and down by, well, I don't know if it was that far, but it was pretty far.
It was pretty, well, one good thing about it, though, Company Two was having a sub-sell that Saturday, so if they were coming in, they got to eat a sub.
We need to decide where we're having it, near Fire Hall maybe, or?
Thank you.
Well, obviously, Joe, that proves that there's a real need for that. So maybe if we do it twice a year, it'll, you know, for the first year, and then it'll be a little more manageable.
I believe so.
Thank you. Chief Boomer?
I just wanted to call in on a couple of events that happened over the last week. We had Steeler Day and Steeler Night, and we had National Night Out. Both brought a lot, a lot of people into town. I just want to commend my officers. I want to commend the fire department and the fire police, who gave unselfishly of all their selves. Everything went off without a hitch. We had no problems. It went smooth. I also like to commend my community service officer, Beth Straka, who planned the National Night Out, and it was a success. It's growing. It gets bigger every year, and things went really well. And I'd also like to thank the community for participating. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Brazili let me know that he would not be here tonight, so I don't think I see him, no. Anne?
I have no report tonight.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to the agenda items. Mr. Kelly?
Madam Mayor, members of council, on this lovely evening, I have a resolution, and it's entitled "Approving a Contract for the Office of City Manager and Director of Planning and Development," and whereas it is the recommendation of Latrobe City Council of Wayne B. Jones to be hired to the position of city manager and director of planning and development. Now therefore be it resolved in Section 1, that Wayne B. Jones' appointee as city manager and director of planning and development shall also assume all other titles and functions previously held by the previous city manager and director of planning and development, including but not limited to director of the tax revenue department, administrator of pension plans, and such other titles and functions of the previous director. Section 2, that within appointment shall be subject to and conditioned upon acceptance and approval of an employment contract attached here to inform as Exhibit A between the city and Mr. Jones. Said approval shall occur no later than August 14th, 2014. Section 2, the mayor, the city manager, the city secretary, and any other proper city officer be entered hereby authorized and directed to sign all documents and take all action necessary to carry into effect it within resolution, and the contract awarded herein, the contract is attached as Exhibit A, and the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 201448. Mrs. Caldwell-Greitner? Ms. Beazey? Yes. Mrs. Smith? Yes. Mr. Boldenary?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
But it's second yes.
I'd like to introduce to the residents of the city Latrobe, our new city manager, Mr. Wayne Jones. And his lovely wife, Lori. Next item, Jim?
The next item, Madam Mayor.
Wait a second, hold on a second, Jim. Wayne, would you like to come up and sit with Bart and get in the, get in the chair, get in the hot seat?
Yes, Mr. Jim.
Joy of the brave.
We're wasting any time. We have to grab what we need. Okay.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is also a resolution, and it reads, "Approving Engagement of de Blasio and de Blasio Associates for an Exit Audit." And now therefore, I'll skip the preambles. Now therefore be it resolved, Section 1, that the council of the city of Latrobe is hereby approve the engagement of de Blasio and de Blasio Associates to perform an exit audit according to the terms and provisions of an engagement letter attached as Exhibit A, that the cost not to exceed $5,000. Section 2, the mayor, city secretary, or any other proper city officer be entered hereby authorized and directed to sign all documents and take all action necessary to carry into effect it within resolution and the engagement letter attached as Exhibit A resolved, and council has stated the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution? Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution? Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution? The item fails for lack of a motion. Short agenda tonight. We'll move on to unfinished business, and that is for the appointment of the Latrobe Municipal Authority. We're not going to do the appointment tonight, but we did invite the candidates that are interested and that we've received letters from to introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about themselves and why they're interested in this position, and then we'll vote on this at the next meeting. So I had a list here. I don't really have any specific orders, so I thought I'd go in alphabetical order. Mr. Chamberlain?
Thank you. I've been a resident of Latrobe for 45 years, an educator and administrator for 40 years, baseball coach for 22 years, a football referee for 46 years, and on St. John's Church, I've been elected parish council president for a number of years. I previously served as chairman of your civil service commission for something like eight or nine years. Now that I'm retired, I felt that I had some time to give, and I was interested in becoming a member of the Water Authority.
Thank you. Mr. Fenton?
My name's Neil Fenton, and pure and simple, I like to serve out of a sense of civic duty. And by the way, that's the guy that taught me about civic duty and civics, and he did it well, so. But my qualifications, I have a Bachelor of Science in Engineering, I have an MBA, so I think I could handle both the technical side and the business side of the Water Authority. The city of Latrobe is unique in the fact that I think we have, our water is a very good natural resource, and it supports major industries in Latrobe, like city brewing, like the new startup over here that's doing the daily juices. So it's very important, so we're unique in that respect to other communities. The Water Authority and the city of Latrobe have always had a good working relationship. For example, in the paving of the roads, we talked about that tonight, we've shared in the cost of that, the city of Latrobe and the municipal authority. I'd like to continue that relationship and working together. And, and really, it's a sense of serve. There's, we have, we have a good authority, we have a good natural resource, and I'd like to continue that, to continue to improve upon that. So I would ask the council members, do they, do you have any questions for me specifically on, on any issue or anything having to do with the appointment to the Water Authority?
Since you asked, are you a city resident?
I am not a city resident. I work at Latrobe Specialty Metals, and so I work in the city of Latrobe, and I'm a resident of Unity Township.
Thank you.
There's no other questions. I'd just like to thank the council for their time and their consideration, and you have, you have a good, good list of candidates, so thank you very much, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thanks, Neil. Mr. Guerra?
Yes, my name's John Guerra. I've been a resident of Latrobe for 35 years. I've been a member of the Latrobe School Board, a member of the Westmore and I U Board. I was on the city council for a short period of time. I was a fireman for a few years out at the Village of Mutual where I was chief fire truck driver, supporting the foam machine from Greensburg. That was before I got married and moved to Latrobe. I am a member of the Knights of Columbus and also a Masonic member, and I feel I can still get back to the community and would like to have a chance to go ahead and do that. I am a cancer survivor, and I'm a walking miracle, and I can, I can help with a lot of things in my life. So I do feel that I would be a great asset to Latrobe, and thank you for giving me this chance to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Mr. Coons, I don't think is here. I think he called and said he was going to be on vacation. Mr. Martha here? I think he's on vacation too. Mr. Mullin? Oops, I, I can't even do the alphabet right. I put Murph in front of Mullin, sorry about that. Wayne?
You did go to Latrobe, right?
Yeah. I thought it was right in my order, but I just read it wrong.
I should have said Madam Mayor. You got my name on, Mr. Chamberlain, too. Okay, most of you know me from fire department coming down here and talking about the fire department, all our problems, et cetera. My name's Wayne Mullin, I've lived in Latrobe all my life. Up on Ridge Heights or on Ride Tribe, there, Ridge Heights, but a plane landed a few years ago, just sort of being reading about that in the paper. That was kind of a thing, and I couldn't remember, it was back in 1967. Anyways, I'll talk about the fire department in a minute. I've been a member over 30 years and been president number five for over 20. Being president of the fire department, you solve a lot of problems, and you still try to solve some. Also, you work with a lot of committees, et cetera, you know, working with the community, you know, self-service, working tirelessly many times, and we've done that and hope to continue on that. Also, we've done, I've done grants for the fire department, federal and state grants, you know, money for number five. I guess you could say I went to college, WWCCC, I received a liberal arts degree and St. Vincent Political Science. My work experience, I started working for Coffin as a management, we opened some stores and worked for them for a while, had some, worked for 20 or 30 people underneath me. Over the years, had a few other jobs, mostly self-employed. Right now, I'm a distributor of industrial supplies, and I also work for a small gem trail company, selling some supplies. Also, I'm on the board of directors of a local credit union, on a supervisory committee. I oversee an audit every year that's worth about $10 million. In closing, I'd like to say that Neil was looking at my notes a little bit, he stole some of my thunder, but, no, he really wasn't, but I'd like to say that the pride to serve on the Water Authority, I think you've had a lot of good people come and go, and there's one tonight, Warren Macaroni, and more people than I've known. I think it's, it's an excellent organization, and I think it's something to be proud of in the city, and I'd like to hope to continue, continue on with that. I think we also, as, you know, we also have to be vigilant, though water, I think is a great thing, but also we're blessed, we have good water, but we also have to keep on it, so I think that's something to think about and care about. In closing, I'd like to thank the council for giving us the opportunity. You do have some good candidates, you ought to really appreciate that, I think, tonight, and I think this is a great way you folks did it, as far as finance comes with it. But thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Wayne, and I too agree, we have some excellent candidates, and I'm really encouraged by the fact that we have six candidates. So there is only one seat available, but I'm sure that there's other things we can find for the rest of the other five candidates to do. So thank you all very much. It's going to be a difficult decision. We're going to hold off until we can discuss at the Agenda Brett meeting, and we'll vote, we'll make the appointment at the September meeting. Any new business items any members of council have? Okay, at this time, we have the citizens' request, the open forum section, where you can talk about anything that you have in your mind, if you so choose. Just state your name and your address, and step up to the microphone, please.
Hi. My name is Janet Smith. I live at 332 Cherry Street. And the reason I'm coming tonight, I, I live across the street from the Athletic Field Playground, and I'm just here to state publicly a concern I have about what I've seen going on in the playgrounds this summer. And I can say this just because I see it every day from the vantage point that I have. Basically, and we've lived there for 23 years. Basically, and we've lived there for twenty-three years, but until this summer, I never saw what I saw this summer, which is basically, there is a large group of mostly teenagers who come and literally spend eight hours a day there, every single day. And I don't want to paint everybody with the same brush, there's probably kids, some kids coming and going, some kids just looking for a place to hang out. But what has happened is basically, because they're there every day, and because they are, basically, they're so long every day, a lot of things happen, there's a lot of smoking going on right in the playground, and I know we've talked in the past about smoking and whether or not we could have ordinance. It's one thing to have an occasional adult, but when you're looking, and what I'm seeing every day, I'm basically saying, I'm sure most of the people that I'm watching are not eighteen, and they are basically smoking for hours on end, a number of them, and littering the ground with cigarette butts. So that's one thing that happens, just because of the fact that they're all the time. Another thing is sometimes just, they pretty much take over all the playground equipment. Very often, you hear a lot of bad language, just because of the sheer fact that people are there all day, every day. A few times this year, we have called the police, just because things have gotten a little bit out of hand, and I do want to thank the police department, because they've been really responsive. They've come and they've talked to whoever was at the playground, they've talked to us as the people in the neighborhood, and I know they're aware of it. And I don't know if I necessarily have a simple solution for this, but I'm just telling you, as somebody who's sitting there witnessing it every day, that this has become an issue this year, and creatively, I think we have to come up with some solutions to discourage the people that we don't want there all the time, every day, and to maybe have positive things for people otherwise to do there. Part of it is enforcing, you know, some of the things so that things don't get out of hand, but maybe it goes beyond that, it seems to me, in terms of why are all these kids there every day for eight hours a day? So, I'm just coming to share my concern as someone who lives there, and I can tell you it's just a completely different environment there this summer.
Ms. Smith, I appreciate you coming here and voicing your concerns. I know I have had multiple, multiple phone calls, pictures of, you know, the congregation going on there, specifically from the director of Latrobe Parks and Recreation. I've had some conversations with the chief, I know that he has, you know, picked up the drive-bys and the visits there, am I correct, chief, there? And I think maybe we need to sit down with Park and Rec and the chief of police and see if we can come up with a solution.
Right, I've seen people, you know, wanting to be there on occasion for a long time, that it's literally just become a place to be every single day.
Yeah.
All day long.
Mr. Weimer was kind enough to put together, and we haven't had a chance to review it yet, he dropped it off today, some suggestions on a recreational smoking policy that we'll review at our Agenda Prep session, and thank you, Mullin, for that, I appreciate that. I just got it, so I don't have it looked at yet, but, and maybe the chief, and Chief Jeannie, you and I maybe sit down and see what suggestions, do you have any ideas of what we can do or things like that, okay? Okay, thank you.
James Miller, one-twenty-seventh East Fourth Avenue. Regarding the playground situation, have we sat down with the parents of the kids that are hanging out there? That might be a good idea. Also, the new city manager, I'd like to know a little bit about him, what is education and his past work history and what his salary is? Thank you.
We will, after we get done with this, I'll let him tell you a little bit about himself.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Council members, thank you for a couple of minutes tonight, wanted to bring up a topic. It affects me and it affects...
Sir, before you can state your name and address, please?
My name is Paul Burgo. I'm a resident of Unity Township, the address is one-three-zero Fowler Lane. I have several properties in the Latrobe area here, and that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. My properties are located on Thompson Street, in the area of Jean Helly's. I have several up and down the street there. What I bring to you tonight is I'm looking for some ideas, maybe some assistance, and In the brief research that I've done, I guess back in nineteen-sixties, early seventies, there was a renewal program where the city came out and they planted trees on the sidewalks, or within the sidewalks. Over the years, the trees grew, apparently they did little research when they planted these trees about how they grow, and they lifted sidewalks. I don't know if those issues have ever been brought up here, or how much it's ever been discussed. I'm sure back in the seventies or eighties, after the city realized they were having this problem, I'm sure there was some discussion, and the solution was, well, we'll make the homeowners pay for the repairs, it's now your responsibility. I have a section over there where recently, somebody had tripped, and the city was notified, I received a letter. They brought this ordinance to my attention, which basically tells me, hey, this is your responsibility, you got to fix it. I can appreciate that if I owned a slab of sidewalk that needed repairs. I could also appreciate if I intentionally or I somehow damaged the sidewalk. As I said, it was a problem that was caused by something that the city itself had put together a program, and then the easy solution was, hey, we'll make this ordinance and we'll pass on the property to the property owner. Now, there's grants, if there's any renewal, any grants that are available, if the city has any ideas that they could pass on to me after discussing this, I'm just, I'm looking for some assistance here. Somebody is going to get hurt, there's no doubt about it. There's several patches along here where it's inches above the ground, it's, the trees totally destroyed sidewalks. I've owned the properties for about twelve years now, and obviously, there was owners prior to me, the situation was never addressed. And again, I come here looking for some kind of assistance. There is a business over there, there's elderly people that walk these sidewalks all the time, and my fear is, if something does happen, there's no litigation at this point, if something does happen, they're going to see my pockets are fairly shallow, and eventually, they're probably going to come back to the city anyway. And because of how all this transpired, I'd hate to see the city get put in a spot where they lose making tens of thousands versus whatever cost of assistance making some repairs to sidewalks.
Mr. Burgo, I can't address the legality issues, and I'll let Mr. Kelly do that if he wants to, or even, I don't know of an ordinance, so I'm not sure, are you talking about a specific ordinance?
Yes, eighty-five dash five.
Our ordinances do require that the homeowners maintain the sidewalks. Now, and I have to confess, I can't say when that ordinance was passed, but my recollection is that it was, that ordinance has been in place before the urban renewal project. So, it was not passed in order for the city to somehow benefit by passing the cost of the sidewalk compared to the homeowners due to the trees being planted. I think that ordinance has been here for many, many, many years. But that's the ordinance.
Use your mic, then, use your mic, please. Can you use your mic? Thank you.
As I said, that ordinance has been around, to my knowledge, even prior to the urban renewal.
And the only other comment I would have is, you know, I've been living in my house for thirty years, and when I bought it, there were two big trees in front of it, and I had to replace my sidewalk. It's the same thing with shoveling snow, you know, the sidewalk in front of your home is your responsibility, so if someone falls when they're, because you didn't shovel or something like that, it's your responsibility. I had to remove a tree that died, that I didn't plant either, but I knew that when I moved in, so I don't know if there's any other recourse available, but it is the responsibility of the homeowners, am I correct?
Yes.
Well, with all the redevelopment, the money coming in, federal money, whatever's coming in, is there anything in place to help replace sidewalks? They're going to streets, obviously. In this area, again, there's a well-established business, very proud owner of a business over there. I do my best, and like you said, in the winter, yeah, you take responsibility, I do my best. This problem has been here for twenty years or better, I can't say that I've been here for that long, but it, it's a significant problem, and honestly, I can't afford to make the repairs on my own. So I'm here to see what's available through grants or renewal projects, that there might be monies available to help to assist the owners.
May I say something? And I think Vega might even remember, when down where we lived, there were no sidewalks, it was all brick, and when they put in the curbing in the sidewalk, I even believe that the homeowner was charged so much for the frontage of their property. Now, this is when that urban renewal was in place, and I am almost positive, every homeowner had to pay for their curbing and their sidewalk. Do you remember that, Vega?
And the tree, yes.
And the trees, yeah.
You're probably correct. Anytime a street, curbing, and gutter, and sidewalk is put in for the very first time, the then borough was permitted under the Borough Code to assess a portion of, maybe not the full cost. Once the assessment was made, then it became either through tax money to maintain the streets and/or the private citizens to maintain the sidewalks. But you are correct about that.
I do believe that was correct. I don't know of anything, I mean, I don't know if anyone else does, you know?
That's why I'm here.
I really don't.
And the people could discuss amongst, maybe there is something available. You know, the only thing I would close with is that this was a problem not brought on by the property owners, it was poor planning by a commission or group of people who tried to do something good back in the day, and it left a tragedy.
I believe that the time, though, that the homeowners, they had say in whether they been, you lived down there, right?
Yeah, I know you did.
I can't remember.
They told that these trees were going to go in this program, and they had to take it, and they had to pay for those trees. Anytime there was any damage, a tree died, they had to be replaced, it had to be replaced by a homeowner.
What was that, the seventies?
Eighties.
I think it was even before that.
It was before the eighties.
It was, you know, the in-laws that lived there.
I was too young then to remember. I don't get to say that very often.
Well, maybe that's something for Mr. Jones to do some research, see if there's any type of grant or funding available to the city, Mr. Burgo, that we could possibly research or look into to help defray some of the costs for that.
It's not just because it's my property, it is a nice street, and it could look a lot better. So, I understand there's going to be some paving going on, you know, let's make the street look nice and share the wealth. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Jeffrey Miller, four-sixteen Fairmont Street. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. The only reason I'm here is to put a face with the name. Across the street from me is four-fifteen Fairmont, which is full of rats and bats. I, as of last Saturday, had my basement attacked by rats. I've lived there for eight years, I never had a mouse or a cockroach. My house is clean, I keep a clean house. Four-fifteen's fallen in amongst itself, one of the walnuts fallen in amongst itself. I've worked with people, and you guys are great, I'm here to help. I just want you to know when I call you on the phone, that's me. I'm not going to yell, scream.
Tell me your name again.
Jeffrey Miller. But you can understand my frustration as I stand in front of you.
I do.
I'm six-hundred-and-fifteen bucks into the Orkin man already. How did I know I had a rat or rats in my basement? My phone line. It's like a horror movie. I go downstairs, I'm looking where the phone line's busting. I have a three-year-old. I'm not afraid, I'm an ex-airborne paratrooper. I'll go downstairs, it's not a deal. I have a three-year-old, not in my house. I need help, and I will help you.
Sir, Mr. Miller, how do you know, I think you referenced that the four-one-five Fairmont is where the rats are coming from?
It's vacant, sir, it's vacant, I did my research.
Okay, but how do you know that? Did you see the rats coming from that dwell?
Yes, I've seen them out of the pipe.
I've seen them come out. I used to live at four-seventeen.
My daughter points up and goes, "Look at the pretty birds at seven o'clock at night when they file on the attic."
He said it's vacant.
The young lady died at the National, but you people are awesome, you're helping me, I'm doing my research, we can work together and attack this. I know there's some things coming up that's going to land use and making things go away, but the guy, I talked to the postal lady today, and I said, "What's the deal with this house back here? It's got a five-gallon metal bucket on the roof that's falling in on itself." I picked up a golf ball from Benny Conglin's house, went to the party, and I could look through the bedroom window out the roof of his property, it's falling in on itself. There's a car, a boat, a pool, a truck, a shed, and grass this deep in the back of their yard, I can name the ordinance, the code violations that are there. The problem is, all of our hands are tied, we really can't do anything. Four-fifteen taxes are paid, we don't know how they're being paid. They're paid. She passed away, she had cancer, she had a young boy that passed away, they moved out, property sat. I came home one night, the kitchen ceiling fell down because the pipe in the bathroom broke, nobody knew it, ran for days. So, as an ex-military officer, I look around, and I say, you know, I can land anywhere in the world, and I got off the serve of active duty anywhere. Team to Latrobe, it's my town. So, I need your help.
And we appreciate that, and I'm sure you've been working with Anne?
Wonderful, wonderful, people have been wonderful.
We will see what we can do. That's one of the reasons we got into the county land bank. It sounds like this might be a pretty good fit for that, it's probably one of our identified homes. Anne's shaking her head, yes?
And that's why I'm here, because amongst yourselves, council people, we can all drive around and do our things, and Anne does a great job, Joe's right down the street, I love my town. I take my three-year-old and we walk, I love my town. But if you don't have a resident, stand up and say, "Help!" Nobody does, that's why I'm here.
Thank you very much.
Take the bullet.
Thank you much.
John Gera, eight-hundred Chestnut Street, Latrobe. I've had a request from a championship figure skater who would like to try to establish a ice skating rink in Latrobe area. I did check with the former manager of the town of Latrobe, and he was looking into it any time. I'm looking for any kind of help that would bring the rink into Latrobe, to bring businesses with the rink. The guy's name is Bob Mock, and like I said, he is a championship figure skater, and he would be willing to give up his time to go ahead and get something started.
Well, Wayne, you asked me today what's on our priority list. I gave you two items, add this one. Yeah, those are the kind of things we need everyone out there in the community, everyone out and about marking the town and seeing what we can do. I mean, none of us ever thought we'd find the land to build WCCC, and we did, so, you know, I think... So, you know, I think if you leave your contact information with Wayne or Barbara Hazet, that can be one of the things that we start looking at again.
I've seen a building that looks like it's falling in, and it looked like it would be a good location for it right next to the American Legion.
And right across from the Athletic Field, that would eliminate...
Yeah, well, that's, yes, we've been talking about that building for a long time, too, so.
I know, but I, just to support what you're saying, you know, a big issue with the kids is there's nothing, there's, I won't say there's nothing, but they have too much idle time. And, you know, I'm not sure if the congregation move from down here to the Athletic Field, or if they're at both places, so, you know, whether that is the right solution or not, but something along those lines would help defray.
Well, with the ice skating rink, every ice skating rink that I've seen built also comes many businesses. And if we're willing to grow Latrobe back to bringing profit back to Latrobe, we need something to bring it in. And definitely, an ice skating rink would bring something in.
It would, because since it is, the teams have to practice at 4:00 a.m., because there's not enough ice time for the limited number of rinks that are in West One County, period.
Yeah, and Mark Maris is well aware of it, right? But I said, before we go to anyplace else, like St. Vincent, I think we'd be willing to grab it and put it out in Unity Township, but, you know, first, we want to go to Latrobe if we can.
Sounds great.
And location is, it needs a big area, so.
Sure, yeah. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the residents? Yes, Mr. Bolton.
Jim Bolton, 225 Irving Avenue. One thing I can say tonight for the first time, coming to the meeting, it seems as though you're finally starting to use your microphones. There's too many meetings I've come to that I can't really hear what you're saying. There's a lot of private discussions, and I'm always hoping that the reporters get all the information, so at least I can read about it in the newspaper tomorrow. Is there some reason that you cannot turn those microphones on when you sit down, and shut them off when you leave tonight? Reaching for them, you forget. There's different things that are said that you don't have your microphone on. And I know from the news, I see a lot of politicians say things that they shouldn't say on an open mic.
You're trying to catch us, aren't you?
Something to watch out for. Once again, I've heard some complaints here. I can understand the gentleman's problem about the sidewalk. I found when you deal with government, do it yourself, don't pay attention to them, you're getting more things done. I put my own sidewalk in. As for the smoking, in today's society, and from what I read, I think if you go over and check, these kids, these teenagers probably smoke in pot. And from what I've seen in the news from Colorado and so forth, it's supposed to be good for you. I don't know. I'm just like, what people are saying. Realize the fact and not predict it. Next year at this time, it's going to be legal in Pennsylvania. That's really guaranteed. So it's a problem. Myself, there's a generation gap here. I lived in the 50s. You people don't understand what this community looked like in the 50s. Today, I don't understand a lot of things that are done, what people are doing. But like I said, we had congregations, we had people stood in the corners, everything else. We never had a problem. Today, there's no place for these young people to go in this town. I see them going down to the flats. And, once again, someplace they can go and smoke their pot, and nobody bothers them. Thank you.
Any other residents have anything they'd like to add? At this time, before we move on, Wayne, do you mind going up to the microphone and introducing yourself and giving a little bit of a, or use this one, I forgot there's one here. Yeah. They'll get used to it.
To your question, I'm a CPA. I was with Ross Township as their manager over in North Hills, North Side, for about six years, and was with Wilkinsburg for four years. Been actively involved in our communities, I live in the Permity, Irwin area currently, been actively involved in the redevelopment of Arzo Mining Town in Permity. So I hope to bring some of that experience into Latrobe. I think Latrobe, it seems to me, has a lot of things going for it, and I'd like to be actively involved in moving forward.
Thank you.
Sure, please.
Thank you. At this time, there would be a city manager's report, so that's what you just did. As far as the manager's report, I have just a couple comments. I also want to commend and congratulate the Latrobe Fire Department, Latrobe Police Department, fire police, and everyone that was involved in the Steeler Fest, Steeler Day, and Steeler Night, and also National Night Out. I was down there. It's a great event, it's a growing event, there's a lot of good information, it's really encouraging to see, to see people involved. And it sounds like Jerry and Julie and the Neighborhood Watch Committee were able to take advantage of that, to sign up some more participants for that. So thanks to your guys, Jim, and to the firemen and the fire police. Obviously, Wayne, welcome to you, it's great to have you here. This is one of our fourth months with Odd City Managers, so, I don't know, probably Barbara's really happy. And we've got a lot, lot of work to do in the next few months, because as you know, it's budget time, so we're really glad to have you here, and I think you're going to like this town a lot. Just a reminder to everyone that Friday, August 22nd, is the Second Annual Banana Split Festival. There'll be, there's activities going on that entire week, leading up to the opening ceremonies at 6 o'clock, the Yellow Tide Festival at, I think, 7 or, at 7 o'clock. And there's a lot of other activities that precede that, so keep an eye on the Latrobe Bulletin, I know it did a nice article of events, and more to come on that, but try to get involved. There's sidewalk sales that afternoon, Saturday, I think Friday or Saturday afternoon, Friday, I think. So a lot of good things going on. Don't forget anything, anybody? Any other comments or from the council members? At this time, then, I'd ask for adjournment. A motion to adjourn.
I'll make that one.
Second, please.
I'll save her.
I'll save her?
I'll.
Can you adjourn?